Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of Monday, May 20th. I'm Michelle Pryor and with me is Chair John Fallon, member Anthea Brady, Bill McGonigal, Mike Bentencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We're going to start tonight with going through our agenda. We'll do acceptance of donations. I think we'll then move to public comment. And then we have a couple of public hearings tonight. So if it's okay with you, Beth, I'm going to skip the Town Manager's report until after our public hearings.
That's good.
So, John, if you could take us through some donations.
Yes, and should I read every donation?
Okay, perfect. If one of them is specific, the last one has to be written into record.
Okay. A move that we accept with gratitude, a donation in amount of $1,500 to the Winchester Cooperative Bank and the Winchester Rory Club to the Recreation Department for Summer Concert Series.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a grant of $99,999 from the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division to the Town of Winchester for the following projects: $27,013 for LED lighting at McCall, $8,103 for attic insulation in the cemetery building, $57,095 for transformers at McCall, and $7,788 for transformers at the water treatment plant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, an EEC stabilization grant of $4,491.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Child Care License for the month of May.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
A move that we accept with gratitude, an emergency management planning grant of $5,100 to the fire department to be used for emergency equipment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a state firefighter safety equipment grant of $11,051 to the fire department to be used for emergency extrication equipment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, donations of $1,295.29 to the council on aging for appreciation of services provided in general operations of council on aging programs/activities.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, $174,000 to be deposited into Mass General Laws Chapter 44 53K fund to be spent for additional downstream sewer inflow and infiltration management mitigation for the Town of Winchester as set forth in the Weston and Sampson letter dated October 30th, 2015.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for getting through those donations. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none. Well, we can wait. Maybe Beth will do our Town Manager report because we can hold on our public hearing until 7:45 in case someone else wanders in, I suppose.
Would you like to interview the candidates for...
Is... We could. Is Andrew Clavett here? Okay, Andrew, why don't you come on up then? You get to be the winning... We'll go through as many as we can until 7:45.
I love it.
The time filler appointment guy.
It's fine.
Okay. So, Andrew, you've applied for to join the Board of Appeals in one of the alternate positions. Mr. McGonigal can tell you all about the role, should you be appointed.
He's the one who made me be here for you.
Oh, wow. And he owes you something. So, if you could, we have your application. Thank you for your interest. Maybe tell us a bit about yourself and why you want to join the board.
Sure. I'm a real estate attorney here in town. My office is literally across the street here. Firm's name is Marsbang &amp; Clavett. We do a lot of transactional real estate work here in town. We represent buyers, sellers of property, both residential, commercial. We don't do a ton of zoning here in town, but we do it in some other areas, specifically Somerville, Cambridge, so we'll do some zoning work there. It was an opportunity to give back. I just moved back into town about six months ago, joined Town Meeting, just thrusting myself into the limelight here.
Wow, right in.
But, you know, I love to... I actually really enjoyed Town Meeting, which I don't know how many people are saying that after the marathon session there at the end, but I really enjoy that and I see this as an opportunity to give back to this community as well. That's given me a ton. I grew up here and work here, live here, raising my family here, so.
Okay, great. That's good, and you like Town Meetings. Take that. Any questions for Andrew?
Since I was on the zoning board, just one or two. You say you don't do a lot of zoning. Not a problem. Have you read zoning bylaws before? Are you familiar with them?
Yes.
All right. What do you believe to be the role of the zoning board in the process of... Just the role it plays across town and development in the process in general?
Sure. I mean, I think the big thing for, from what I understand of what I've read online and done a little research myself, is, you know, making informed decisions.
So I'll call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of Monday, May 20th. I'm Michelle Pryor and with me is Chair John Fallon, member Anthea Brady, Bill McGonigal, Mike Bentencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We're going to start tonight with going through our agenda. We'll do acceptance of donations. I think we'll then move to public comment and then we have a couple of public hearings tonight. So if it's okay with you, Beth, I'm going to skip the Town Manager's Report until after our public hearings.
Sure.
So, John, if you could take us through some donations.
Yes, and Patty, should I read every donation?
You can ask to.
Okay, perfect.
If one of them is specific, the last one has to be read into record.
Okay. A move that we accept with gratitude, a donation in amount of $1,500 to the Winchester Cooperative Bank and the Winchester Rory Club to the Recreation Department for Summer Concert Series.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a grant of $99,999 from the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division to the Town of Winchester for the following projects: $27,013 for LED lighting at McCall, $8,103 for attic insulation in the cemetery building, $57,095 for Transformers at McCall, and $7,788 for Transformers at the water treatment plant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, an EEC stabilization grant of $4,491.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Child Care License for the month of May.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. A move that we accept with gratitude, an emergency management planning grant of $5,100 to the fire department to be used for emergency equipment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, a state firefighter safety equipment grant of $11,051 to the fire department to be used for emergency extrication equipment.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, donations of $1,295.29 to the Council on Aging for appreciation of services provided in general operations of Council on Aging programs/activities.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A move that we accept with gratitude, $174,000 to be deposited into Mass. Journal of Laws Chapter 44 53K fund to be spent for additional downstream sewer inflow and infiltration management mitigation for the Town of Winchester as set forth in the Weston and Sampson Letter dated October 30, 2015.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for getting through those donations. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none. Well, we can wait. Maybe Beth will do our Town Manager Report because we can hold on our public hearing until 7:45 in case someone else wanders in, I suppose.
Would you like to interview the candidates for the petition?
Is... We could. Is Andrew Clavett here? Okay. Andrew, why don't you come on up then? You get to be the winning... We'll go through as many as we can until 7:45. The time filler appointment guy.
It's fine.
Okay. So, Andrew, you've applied for... To join the Board of Appeals in one of the alternate positions. Mr. McGonigal can tell you all about the role, should you be appointed.
He also made... He's the one who made me be here for it.
Oh, well done. He owes you something.
Yeah.
So if you could, we have your application. Thank you for your interest. Maybe tell us a bit about yourself and why you want to join the Board.
Sure. I'm a real estate attorney here in town. My office is literally across the street here. Firm's name is Mars, Bang &amp; Clavett. We do a lot of transactional real estate work here in town. We represent buyers, sellers of property, both residential, commercial. We don't do a ton of zoning here in town, but we do it in some other areas, specifically Somerville, Cambridge, so we'll do some zoning work there. It was an opportunity to give back. I just moved back into town about six months ago, joined Town Meeting, just thrusting myself into the limelight here.
Right in.
But, you know, I love to... I actually really enjoyed Town Meeting, which I don't know how many people are saying that after the marathon session there at the end, but I really enjoy that and I see this as an opportunity to give back to this community as well. That's given me a ton. I grew up here and work here, live here, raising my family here, so.
Okay. Great. That's good, and you like Town Meetings. Take that. Any questions for Andrew?
Since I was on the zoning board, just one or two. You say you don't do a lot of zoning. Not a problem. Have you read zoning bylaws before? Are you familiar with them?
Yes.
All right. What do you believe to be the role of the zoning board in the process of... Just the role it plays across town and development in the process in general?
Sure. I mean, I think the big thing for... From what I understand, from what I've read online and done a little research myself, is, you know, making informed decisions when homeowners or property owners or developers, whoever it may be, are looking to do something that is... No, I wouldn't say against the bylaws, but they're looking for a special permit. They're looking for a variance, and I think it's important to take the next step and think of how is the decision that the board is going to make going to affect other people in town? Not just, you know, we understand that it might be to somebody's benefit, but you have to look at it and approach it in a different way where you see, all right, if we do this, what kind of precedence does that set? What effect does it have on neighbors? Things like that. So I think, you know, that's my understanding of it and that's kind of why it interests me to be involved.
The zoning board gets opinions or feedback from a number of other boards and committees: Design Review, Historical Commission, Concom, Planning Board, among others. What do you see the zoning board's relation to with those other boards and committees today?
I think they have to be open to what those boards and committees have to say. I mean, there might be some points that those committees can bring up that are going to, you know, have an effect on the... You know, or alter the decisions you're making, give you more information so you can make sound decisions. I think you have to be able to work in tandem with those groups and hear everybody when you're approaching a decision that needs to be made.
Sure. Okay. Great. The... Does anybody else have any other questions?
You get one more.
You're the expert, so I'm listening. All right.
Yeah, I mean, my views don't matter. You're the one applying. And I think that just as a word of advice, there's a lot of our bylaws that are open to interpretation.
Sure.
And, you know, we have great boards and committees full of volunteers who are real experts in what they're doing. And hearing you give respect to that is going to be very important. I think that's what helps makes the zoning board work, making sure that you're thorough. And the only... The only bit of caution I would give to you really more than anything else is if you have clients in town, stay away from any petitions that might involve them whatsoever.
Yeah.
We have three regular members, three alternate members for a reason. You know, if somebody can't show up, if there's a conflict of interest, stay away from it.
Sure.
The best thing you can do as a zoning board is to keep the town clean and help us avoid unnecessary litigation.
Absolutely. I mean, not only for the town's purposes, the board's purposes, but for my own purposes as well as an attorney. I certainly wouldn't want to be involved in anything where, you know, a client of mine, former client of mine somehow related to something that I'm involved in, I don't want anything to do with that.
No, it's not anything.
I hear you on that. I appreciate that advice.
Mike, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, to Bill's point regarding conflicts. First of all, thank you for applying and being willing to serve the town. This is one of the more thankless positions that we have, and so we appreciate your willingness to step up. But as Bill said, that the conflict issue, because you do practice real estate law in town, you know, we would just certainly, you know, hope that you would kind of over-correct on being, you know, careful about that.
Sure.
And I have a sense that you would. So certainly have my support for this position, so thank you.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Great. And thanks for diving in. I mean, not everybody moves to town and just jumps in and volunteers, so thank you for that. Anthea, John, any questions?
I have none.
No, I just appreciate that you enjoyed Town Meeting. You've got a lot of exciting times ahead of you.
I can't wait.
All right. So, John, if you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we appoint Andrew Clavett to the alternate position for the Board of Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your interest. Thanks for serving.
Get to work.
All right.
All right, let's just go through the next two. Thanks, Andrew. Is Catherine Jackson here? Come on up. It's like The Price is Right. Except we have no prizes. No showcase showdown. So, thank you for your application, as we all saw. And I know your patience because you applied right at the beginning of the posting being open, so I know we had to wait out the whole season and for that posting to close. So thank you for your interest. If you could maybe tell us a bit more about yourself and why you want to be part of the Council on Aging.
Okay. Well, I've been a registered nurse for over 40 years. I worked at Winchester Hospital for years. Then I opened a business downtown, Baber &amp; Shoe. None of you will probably... Well, you may have been. But, um...
Wow, I know what you just said there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so then I ran Winchester Mount Vernon House for 21 years as executive director right here. Worked very closely with people in the council and also with the Jank Center for their social participation. I retired from there and then realized retirement wasn't something I really enjoyed, so I went back to work at Winchester Hospital, teaching the nursing aid program, and I did that for five years. So I have a lot of experience with dealing with seniors and being one myself. I have a little bit of personal experience. And when I was approached for my interest, I thought, yeah, I think I can bring my experience to the Council on Aging and be of some help.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Catherine?
I just want to thank her for her work at the Mount Vernon House. I live in that neighborhood and the expansion.
Oh, you have no idea.
We were very worried about that and it came out great and plenty of green space. It was a really nice, very nice job.
It really did turn out very, very well, yeah.
We're lucky to have it in town.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of your peers are right there, and I know it helped us get some of the van going. Was Mount Vernon House a big sponsor for that? And Senior T's at the farm, so.
Yeah.
You've been active, whether it's your hands on it or not.
Oh, yeah. I'm in Winston Club. I sing and dance and I do whatever. You know, I raise funds for the hospital. I do whatever.
Going to raise the bar for auditions now.
Yeah.
If you could sing and dance your way into a role. Mike or Bill, any questions?
None, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. The Council on Aging is anxiously awaiting us approving your appointment.
Yes.
So thank you very much, so.
You're welcome. You're welcome. My pleasure.
Anthea, any questions?
Nice to meet you.
No? All right, so we can make a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Andrew Clavett to the alternate position for the Board of Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your interest. Thanks for serving.
Get to work.
All right.
All right, let's just go through the next two. Thanks, Andrew. Is Catherine Jackson here? Come on up. It's like The Price is Right. Except we have no prizes. No showcase showdown. So, thank you for your application, as we all saw. And I know your patience because you applied right at the beginning of the posting being open, so I know we had to wait out the whole season and for that posting to close. So thank you for your interest. If you could maybe tell us a bit more about yourself and why you want to be part of the Council on Aging.
Okay. Well, I've been a registered nurse for over 40 years. I worked at Winchester Hospital for years. Then I opened a business downtown, Baber &amp; Shoe. None of you will probably... Well, you may have been. But, um...
Wow, I know what you just said there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so then I ran Winchester Mount Vernon House for 21 years as executive director right here. Worked very closely with people in the council and also with the Jank Center for their social participation. I retired from there and then realized retirement wasn't something I really enjoyed, so I went back to work at Winchester Hospital, teaching the nursing aid program, and I did that for five years. So I have a lot of experience with dealing with seniors and being one myself. I have a little bit of personal experience. And when I was approached for my interest, I thought, yeah, I think I can bring my experience to the Council on Aging and be of some help.
Great.
So.
Okay. Any questions for Catherine?
I just want to thank her for her work at the Mount Vernon House. I live in that neighborhood and the expansion.
Oh, you have no idea.
We were very worried about that and it came out great and plenty of green space. It was a really nice, very nice job.
It really did turn out very, very well, yeah.
We're lucky to have it in town.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of your peers are right there, and I know it helped us get some of the van going. Was Mount Vernon House a big sponsor for that? And Senior T's at the farm, so.
Yeah.
You've been active, whether it's your hands on it or not.
Oh, yeah. I'm in Winston Club. I sing and dance and I do whatever.
Oh.
I raise funds for the hospital. I do whatever.
Going to raise the bar for auditions now.
Yeah.
If you could sing and dance your way into a role. Mike or Bill, any questions?
None, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. The Council on Aging is anxiously awaiting us approving your appointment.
Yes.
So thank you very much, so.
You're welcome. You're welcome. My pleasure.
Anthea, any questions?
Nice to meet you.
No? All right, so we can make a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Catherine Jackson to the Council on Aging, term to expire March 31, 2026.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for serving.
Thank you very much.
Call Jennifer Wilson right away. You're finally appointed.
Actually, Tom Howie.
Or Tom, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Austin?
Yes.
For the Permanent Shade Tree Committee?
Street Tree.
Street Tree.
Yes.
Street Tree Committee.
It's every time.
Got it. Yes. Okay.
Permanent Shade Tree Committee.
Is it the Permanent Shade Tree Committee? Is that correct?
Street Tree.
Street Tree.
Street Tree.
Street Tree.
So it's... Wait. Permanent Street Tree Committee?
Street Committee.
I'm here for the Street Tree Committee.
No, 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 no. Tonight we have another guy here for the Shade Tree Committee.
He's going to get the motion right if we officially point you there, so.
Does anyone know what committee you're...
The trees with no shade.
For cactus?
There you go. Austin, thank you. We have your application. We will get the name of the committee correct when we make the motion to appoint here, but if you could tell us a bit about yourself and your interest in serving on the committee, anything else you want to share.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm a nine-year resident of Winchester and I have an academic background in environmental management. I run... Day-to-day, I run a nonprofit that focuses on climate change, so I'm well aware of the issues that human activities in the earth are causing and the damage that they will cause to the climate and how that will affect people. At a local level, I've lived here long enough now to see lots of change and transition in the town, and among the many assets that we have that make the town unique are the trees. And when I heard about this opportunity, it was an exciting opportunity because I thought, here's a way for me to really focus some of my time and energy on helping the town recognize the value of the assets and the trees and find ways to incorporate that value into planning decisions and really realize their value over the long term. And the trees have a direct effect on people's health, on the aesthetics of the community, and it's important that over time we maintain that there's no net loss of trees and ideally that we're allowing the trees to grow and mature and become more valuable and beautiful to the community.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Certainly a lot of academic experience in this, so that's always helpful. Thank you. Any questions for Austin?
No.
No? David, just thank you, David Miller, for finding more folks for your committees. Do you have any questions for us?
Have we got the name right?
Austin's right.
As long as we get the name right. Okay. So, John, if you want to make a motion.
All right, we'll make a motion that we appoint Austin Whitman to the Permanent Street Tree Committee. Right? Okay. Term to expire... Wait, I'm not done yet. No. Term expires June 30, 2026.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy birthday?
Oh, happy birthday. Okay, well, happy birthday to her. Okay, so now we'll move to our... Any... Did anyone wander in for public comment? No. Okay, then let's go to our public hearing. The first one we will take up is change of manager, the Atavola Change of Manager, Change of Officers, Directors, LLC Managers, Alteration of Premises, and Change of Ownership. So, welcome.
Hi.
If you could just let us know sort of, you know, what this change means for the business and who the new manager's going to be, what the change of officers and sort of the new configuration.
Okay.
At the restaurant ownership side. That'd be great.
So I purchased into Atavola Restaurant in January of 2020 along with Vittorio Etteri, who I took over the majority of the ownership. First time owning a restaurant, so I wanted to leave, keep him on board, great mentor and help answer questions and help guide me through. Didn't really know there was going to be a worldwide pandemic, but made it through. And then we got to the point where I could purchase the rest of the shares. I purchased 100% of the restaurant from him, and the change of ownership is just me taking over 100%. The alteration of premises is 36 Church Street, which was Sarabian design, which was right next door, became available, so we are expanding and cutting a hole in the wall, joining the two spaces and building a more seating with a sit-down bar and all of that.
Hours of operation are going to be the same?
Hours of operation is going to be the same. Same menu. Menu's going to be available both sides. It's going to look pretty much identical as much as...
One entrance or two entrances?
There'll be one main entrance, which will be at 36 Church Street, with a secondary entrance at 34, acting as an egress point, along with the two rear exits as egress points as well.
Okay. I get my first couple of questions out. I'll turn it over to my colleagues here.
I just wonder how the outside dining's working out for you?
So far this year, not good because the weather hasn't cooperated.
Right. But historically, how's that been?
It's been great. It's added seating that wasn't really counting on, so it's been a very big blessing. The town has really welcomed it. A lot of people seem to think and agree that it makes the town look and feel livelier as long as everyone keeps up with it and cleans up. The flowers are a nice touch and the lights and everything like that. The parking is an issue, but it's going to be an issue everywhere, so.
Great. Thank you. What are your current hours of operation?
Tuesday through Thursday, we're open from 5 until 9. Friday and Saturday are open, so 5 to 10.
5 to 10? I don't... None of those sound like real church-going hours to me.
No.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Can we take a vote on this? Okay.
So making a motion here?
Yes.
Okay. I am making a motion for the change of manager, change of officers, directors, LLC managers, alterations of premises, and change of ownership for Legabri LLC DBA Atavalo located at 34 Church Street.
So do we have to open and close a public hearing and then?
Yeah.
See if there's any comments from...
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think that's the motion we need to make.
What is the motion we make?
We need to find that... We have to determine in writing and after a hearing that the premises is not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of the school of church.
That's never been part of the...
Whoa, 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 whoa.
That's what was noticed.
Yeah.
So if that's what MGL 138, Section 15A requires.
That's not my job.
It doesn't actually line up with what was noticed.
All right. So we will?
If we move to close the hearing.
This is the post, but Mike, to Mike's point, is anyone else here for the Atavola Change of Manager hearing purpose, so we can close that part of the hearing? Are we doing that part?
So what you're saying technically, because that... All that's ever been part of the motion for the last five years?
Yeah.
Is the first paragraph. The second paragraph is... Has never been... I have been... Never been informed that that should be part of the motion. What this is, is a notice to the public.
Gee, tell them when you tuned in.
From my perspective, that's what we noticed, so that's what we have to do, and it's not a hard thing to write, and I'm happy to do it if...
Oh, no, that's not... That's not the issue. The issue... The question for me to you in an informative way is that what we've always done is the first paragraph. No one has ever counseled me to do anything more than that. So that's what the first paragraph has been. I'm just following what Mike did when I first came and what Mariano did. So I mean, I have no problem.
So make a suggestion. For tonight, why don't we just roll with this and then if we have a change of process,
I like my other motion better. Uh, we, we have a, I make a motion for change of manager, change of offices, directors, LLC managers, alteration premises, and change of ownership for Legabri LLC DBA Atavalo located at thirty-four Church Street.
That, that's not.
Okay.
That's why I said to read the first.
All right, I'll read the first paragraph. The windshield select board will hold a meeting, no, that's.
So it's, yeah, it's change, it's the same thing that he, I just, what's here.
All right, so I, I move.
It's the same thing that's
A change of manager, change of offices, directors, LLC managers, all right, wait a second, time off. I'm gonna read the exact same thing for the third time.
Yeah.
So I just read that, so what should it, it say?
I think what we're looking, what we're trying to do here is give our approval to the petitioned change of ownership, which is a hundred percent to Mr.
Carly.
Him, um, and also approval for the expansion. Both being done in uh as necessary under MGL one thirty-eight, section, section fifteen A.
Yeah, I was gonna, there you go. All right, we'll take a vote on it. It's moved to seconded.
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. You're good.
Yeah?
Yeah, you're all set.
We got some work to do, but you're good and good luck. Okay. Now, this might be easier for us. Uh, but let's have our National Grid grant of location. We'll open that public hearing for Cross Street, the grant of location.
So Matt will come full circle?
That's your seat, Matt, too.
Magic. Amazing.
Thanks, thanks to Wincam. Maybe in two weeks it won't, but we'll take it.
Just leave it on that.
So if you could maybe introduce yourselves, um, you can see our names in front of us. I don't know that Mr. McGonigal has met you. Um, I don't think he was here for the first grant of location, so if our, our colleagues from National Grid and, and Phil, if you don't have, but I would just ask you guys to introduce yourselves and then just start your presentation, please.
Sure, okay, thank you. My name's Diana Cuddy, National Grid Gas, uh, one seventy Data Drive, Waltham, Massachusetts. And I am here tonight because um we had previously come to do a grant of location hearing for a new grant, uh, regulator station. Um, today we're back to do a separate location to replace the existing regulator station and then to add uh, skater box and some vent poles. The project engineer that was with me last time was covering for the, the project engineer whose job this is, and this is Martin. I'll let him introduce himself and.
Yes, hi, uh, my name is Martin Nofosu. Um, I'm the project engineer on this, on this part, on this job. Yes, so I am based in um Waltham, Data Drive, uh, same as Diana. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So the presentation is pretty much the same as last time and I can um go through it?
I hope so. All right.
So generally, just a quick overview and background, uh, the construction process and then the existing conditions, uh, the future state and any questions anybody may have. So National, National Grid is replacing the existing natural gas regulator station with a new underground station at Cross Street and Highland View Ave in order to update the equipment used for the distribution of gas to our Winchester customers in a safe, reliable and more effective, efficient manner. National Grid is replacing the station in its original location after working with town officials to evaluate three other potential, actually, it's two others, this is the, one of the three, uh, potential locations to find a suitable location that met the criteria from our design engineers as well as addressing the concerns from the town officials. This is just an aerial view of where the existing station is. This is existing conditions. This is from a Google Earth photo of what the site looks like now. You can see the, the um, the doors, like access panels to the existing station. So this is the construction process. After all the permits are issued, the job will, will be scheduled. At that time, a butter flyers are sent out to all the abutters of the job of the construction. And it will outline a lot of key facts. There's a sample of the abutter list, letter there from a, a separate job. But there's um a couple of links to videos. It shows the hours of operation. And then it has the supervisor's name and phone number usually at the bottom if anyone has any real, real specific questions.
Will you be digging in the street?
Yes, because they need to connect the inlet and outlet piping from the regulator station to the gas main that's in the street. So minimal excavation, but not like a big main replacement job, but then we'll be digging in the street.
And that's done before they pave the street?
That's the intention.
I hope so.
But really, it's no joke, like
No, yeah.
this has to happen before we pave the street because
Yes.
that whole neighborhood's been torched for too many years and, and that, that would be totally unacceptable if you're digging in the street afterwards. Like you, I'd be impressed if it really be fired to a degree from the top.
Right, so the, actually, the, Martin can correct me if I'm wrong, but the vault is a prefabricated vault, so it's, we already have it. We've purchased it, it's sitting, ready to go in, so the, it would just be the inlet and outlet piping, so it would happen relatively fast. And Martin can address, the contractor uh is kind of geared up for this, so it wouldn't be a long drawn-out process.
Could you, could you give a sense of how many, is it a three-day project? Is it a, span two weeks with two days of something and two days of something else?
It's, the whole project should take about a month um from excavation to um restoration.
And this is getting done after the school year?
That's actually part of what the permit, um, when, once we get the grant location, we can file for the street opening permit. And um the conditions, hours of operation and time, like when it's good and how long the permit's good for, that would be all dictated in the, in that, at that time. Some of the restoration work as well. We're gonna widen the sidewalk.
Yes, I was just gonna note that if the work happens before school ends, we would have probably an eight-thirty start like EverSource had. We are trying to get it done as quickly as possible.
Yes.
So we have to take that into account.
And there's no kind of special equipment and that's gonna get delayed and all this kind of stuff, right? This is you just.
We have everything right now, and then the piping is standard piping.
So have we thought, oh, go ahead.
No, no.
Well, I was just wondering if we've thought about where, how big is a work crew, Martin? In terms of like, you know, how many trucks on any given day, just thinking about where they're gonna be parked?
Um, I, I, usually it depends on, on the contractor. But usually um an excavator, uh, a dump truck, uh, and a work pickup.
So three-ish trucks in any given time? And we can specify that as well in the permit, right?
Yeah, I think we just, I made a note about that. We've, as I'm sure you've heard, there's been a lot of uh, construction with EverSource project in this neighborhood for the past three or so years. Um, and particular concern is the visibility for the neighboring streets that don't have sidewalks on those side streets with construction vehicles parking at the corners. So I think we would wanna work, have you work with DPW and engineering to designate an area where your workers could park so that we can make sure we're not having that same conflict with this work.
Just wanted to bring up the existing picture again in case you wanted to. Okay, so the project will conclude once the vault is brought online and all the site work restoration is completed. The site uh work will include some landscaping, road and sidewalk restoration to the areas that were impacted by the installation of the vault, the pipes and the appurtenances. The vault access doors will be flush with the sidewalk and consist of a slip-resistant diamond steel plated door that is ADA compliant. The regulator station will have advanced features which will result in fewer inspections from National Grid instrumentation regulation personnel. The less frequent and faster inspections will usually take a few hours to complete. Onset vehicles will consist of a pickup truck and a box truck when calibrating and inspecting the instrumentation. And the police detail will be on-site each time to help with, to help direct traffic and um will be on-site during the construction of the regulator station piping. And this is a rendering um of the future state, just to give it a little bit of a three-dimensional view.
Is there a thirty-six inch clearance from the new boxes yet?
Yeah.
And that's actually just a site plan of the construction and.
Can I ask what the current, uh, this is going in at the, at the same location as the existing one? So uh, right now, when they come out to do the readings or inspections, where do those trucks park?
They probably will park around, I'm thinking around the corner, but I think we've mentioned, we've talked to somebody about too far. Don't know if I can see that far. There's, um, well, let's go with this. They would park either in the shoulder here if this is allowable, if it's enough room to safely access the, the vault, or they can park on side street. They don't really bring much in, um, equipment, right?
One truck.
Yeah.
So I've got a question. At the end of the day, like, do you, do you anticipate needing any laydown space? Will there be equipment left behind, stuff on the sidewalks? Like if a crew comes in, you know, at seven-thirty, eight-thirty, depending on the start time, and at the end of the day and the crew leaves, is there anything left behind or is that site sealed up nightly? What does it look like at the end of each construction day, based on the phases, I understand?
Yeah, it should be cleaned up every night, but they do stage some piping. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to talk. I, I do believe someone mentioned an apartment complex nearby that they were in conversation with. Did you hear anything like that?
Um, I, I think usually once all the permits are approved, then the, the, the contractor that's awarded the project looks for a site nearby where they can park all their equipments. So usually um all the directions comes from the town on what they would like us to do, and then we just follow whatever, whatever they ask for.
Okay, but there is some anticipated need to leave some equipment behind, that's what I was trying to get at. Okay.
So my understanding from last time is that maybe this site originally wasn't ideal because it was thought that the power lines were in the way. Is that undetermined? It's not an issue or is it? It, it was sound like something we need to be sort of like craned in.
Right, exactly, yeah. It, it's definitely, um, it wa- it was a concern originally, but they've been able to figure it out and work around it. And the other um issue was that it was a re- more of a residential neighborhood than Cross at Highland. Um, but it's, we already have the station there, so it's an easier, quicker replacement.
I, I think it's probably appreciated. I know the last time you were here, you, you got a lot of our baggage from some other stuff. But I, I think it is appreciated that there's not gonna be a, a change at another location where this is already sort of uh something that's in, you know, people are familiar with, it's there. And there's a pipe there right now. It doesn't, it's not um intrusive.
Right, and they're used to the inspections there now, which are uh more frequent and a little bit longer. Once the new station's in, they'll be less frequent and shorter.
You said you were going to expand the sidewalk? Did that, can you bring up the picture again there?
Yes. Do you want that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
How, how are you going to do that?
We'll be widening it. I think we're bringing it to the curb, correct?
We're just
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, we're just replacing the, the grassy side with um asphalt.
That kind of, the berm between the, the sidewalk and the road right now? Is that our general, do we, is that what we like to do?
For the whole length?
Let's uh just be, to make the site ADA accessible after the boxes and vents are put in, they need to widen it.
Okay.
If you can see on the rendering, the, the box is at the back of sidewalk. So they're gonna widen the sidewalk in the front, so it's still ADA accessible.
So there has to be a certain amount of width of the sidewalk to be ADA accessible? And that's a national regulation that you have to comply with? I guess my question is because, one, um, that's more impermeable surface, which we're always worried about around here. And two, it doesn't match the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know if it complies with our usual approach, Beth, you?
It's only for the, the work area, right? It's not on either end, so continue to be the green strip.
Thirty feet or so, would you say?
Yeah.
Mike? John?
No, just, I mean, I think that as John mentioned, we have an interest in getting all the work done on Cross Street um as soon as possible so we can clean it up and put it back into use, so um. Thank you.
Has EverSource done this section of Cross Street?
Say that again.
They've completed their underground work and now they're going back and restoring sidewalks and curbing. And then they'll be paving the street, but they've not paved this section of the street.
Do you know when they might be doing that?
They have a lot of sidewalk and curbing work to do uh before we can talk about a paving schedule, so I don't think we're quite there yet.
So it's likely they'll be done before that happens?
That's the goal.
I, I don't think we would let them pave until they were complete, so.
Um, in terms of abutters, um, regarding EverSource, one thing we found is that the, a butter for Cross Street tends to be very narrow, uh, maybe in terms of what's required, but that the sort of side streets right near there also um are very appreciative of having as much information as possible. So I don't, maybe Matt can sort of give some insight into like, is it Highland View? Sort of this, the cross streets across the street, whether those um, you know, may benefit from getting that information?
Yeah, we can definitely, yeah, add that. The other thing I meant to mention, so the letters go out just introducing the project and then when the crew is gonna be working right in front of your house or what, your residence, they put a flyer on the door, a door hanger, just to instruct you to leave your car not in the driveway in case you need to leave or something like that during the middle of it. But yeah, so they get two notices and the door hangers are up to the minute. Notice.
And I know it's gonna go out to a contractor, but I would just say this to, to both of you and the contractor. So we'll work through conditions and we'll work through all parking and potentially if you need to ask the town for laydown space. But certainly, you know, communication with the neighbors will be critical, as is starting when you say you're gonna start and ending when you say you're gonna end and not before and not later. So if you can try to, you know, really reinforce that with whoever is doing the work for you. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll hear from neighbors and you'll hear from us, and we'd rather not start that way, so.
And this has been assigned, I think it's still going to Midway, they're one of the, the better contractors that do the work, yeah.
Okay.
With that type of thing.
Yes. Mr. Miller, since this is a public hearing, you may come up if you'd like to say something.
Sorry, Bill makes a good point about impervious surface. If you're a homeowner and you have more than five hundred square feet of impervious surface, you need to do something about that. And so I'm curious what they're projecting.
Certainly looked less than five hundred square feet to me, but I can't say that I, that we ran through any calculation.
So there's our, around the corner, there's already um no new grassed up, so I assume from that same delineation point through the work zone, you'll have
Yeah, there's a, there's a handicap ramp at the corner of Covent Road and they would just work back to the end of the um, the vault.
Right.
So we don't expect the net new impervious surface to be more than five hundred square feet?
No.
Okay.
Is there, is there permeable surface that we could use for the sidewalk? Have we ever, I know we, no?
No, uh, it's not. It's from a maintenance perspective.
Yeah.
Long-term, it wouldn't, um, we use hot top or concrete.
Yeah, it makes, it comes up with the zoning board stuff a lot with driveways that are being expanded, but driveways are not sidewalks and private property is not municipal property, so.
Yep.
You answered the question, thank you.
Other questions?
I just, I appreciate that you were able to go back and look at this location and, and be able to find a a solution that worked in the existing and, you know, the, the other Cross Street location, um, you know, poses a lot of challenges and especially after um the ongoing work in the area. So appreciate that this, this solution is gonna sort of not um add something new or change something in somewhere else along the road.
So seeing only one person in the audience, uh, Mr. Miller, any other questions for the public hearing before we?
Got my question.
Okay. Fair enough. Any other questions before we close the hearing? From the board? Nope, all right, so we can close the public hearing. Thank you, thanks for the information.
Thank you.
And good luck with the details. Any last comments, Matt? Are we good?
Are you voting?
We will.
Okay.
So?
Sir?
Yes.
Uh, we, we approve National Grid's request for grant of location in Cross Street to install a new skater box, vent poles, and ancillary, ancillary piping in Cross Street at the intersection with Highland View Ave within the public right of way.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, I appreciate it.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. Now we will go back to the town manager's report, but we're just powering through tonight's agenda.
I have a long list of updates. It's been a while. So I have a few things, a few pages to cover. First up, two announcements related to some good news for two of our departments. Um, so our DPW was notified recently that they were recognized by Mass DEP for a two thousand and twenty-four water, public water system awards program. Uh, we received one of the top scores in the medium and large community system category. And our water department has previously received this award in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty. So congratulations to our DPW staff, uh, especially Jim Gibbons, who all know retired.
Yep.
Um, so he, he was obviously in charge of the system for the three years that we received that grant. Uh, also, I wanted to uh congratulate our police department. They were recently re-accredited by a team of assessors from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. Uh, verification by the assessment team. They verified that the town meets the commission's standards and is part of a voluntary process to gain state accreditation, uh, which it looks at um policies and procedures, um, and that shows that the police department strives to meet and maintain standards um set across the state. So that, that re-accreditation is good for the next three years, so congratulations to them. Um, and then a following up from one of the articles that was before our um spring town meeting. So there was um uh funding approved for uh rehabilitation of the Winchester High School gym floor. And the school committee and school department will be hosting um a public information session tomorrow evening, May twenty-first at six-thirty PM in the Winchester High School auditorium. And there will be um folks available both from the school department, but also from the architect for the project if there's any questions on that project. Two updates from our health department. First up, um, they have a new program working with Winchester Hospital where they've funded reduced price for sampling for ticks so that you can go onto the town's website. If you have it, if you have a, have removed a tick, you can send it in for sampling to see if it has Lyme disease. So please encourage people to use that program if they'd like. Uh, also, we are continuing our household hazardous waste collection days. As I've mentioned before, the town recently joined a consortium, so those uh collection days are now held at the uh Minuteman Household Hazardous Waste Product Collection Facility in Lexington. Uh, and those are, the hours are from nine AM to two PM, and the next events will be Saturday, June fifteenth, and then July twentieth. Um, there'll be additional events held through the rest of the summer and into the fall. Um, we are moving ahead, as we've talked about at the past uh few meetings with the uh design for the Town Center Traffic Calming Project. We've had a lot of really great uh collaborative meetings with um folks from the chamber, downtown businesses and merchants. Um, and there's two events that I wanted to highlight for the board. One, there'll be a table held at Town Day, Saturday, June first. And then also, we are planning to hold a virtual public meeting where really the intent is to invite the whole town to come talk to us about uh their thoughts for those improvements to the town center. Um, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, June eleventh at seven PM. Um, and then the intention is to have tool come And then the intention is to have Tool come back into the board, probably sometime in July or August, to sort of present to you what they've heard, present kind of a final design or a couple of different options at the concept level, and then get some reaction from the board, so we can take it into the next phase of design.
Is there a preliminary design right now?
Yeah, so there's, dates back a few years, we had Tool come and do a concept, very high-level concept plan to do some improvements in the Town Center, pedestrian improvements, traffic calming improvements. And so, then we got a half million dollar earmark to take that from that concept phase through 100% design.
Can I find that on the town website?
You should be able to, yep, under Town Projects.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Next up, just the Shannon Beach. So as we all are aware, last summer, or in the past few summers, there's been some concerns about parking, both in Winchester and neighboring communities as a result of the Shannon Beach facility on the Mystic Lakes. And so, starting next week, or starting at the end of this week, actually, our police department and DPW will be reinstalling the temporary signage that we put up last summer and was discussed with, by the board at a public meeting. We'll be reinstalling those, that signage.
It's fairly effective, right? We didn't get many complaints.
I think we also had a really rainy, rainy summer, so I think.
Could you taking credit for the weather?
But I think it sets the, it sets the tone, right? And it encourages people to find, even part of the Wedgemere law, DCR is really trying to limit the parking on site, so that it's sustainable for them to be able to manage the crowds that are there, right? So they're not feeling like it's an overwhelming amount of people for them to manage. So it's a, it's helping the neighbors, but it's also helping with the crowd management perspective. So signage will go up on Bacon Street at Lakeview, on Engiden Roads, Mystic Valley Parkway at Lakeview, and Lakeview at Ravens Cross over the next week, before Memorial Day weekend. And then just construction capital project updates, there's a lot going on. Obviously, EverSource will be out starting this week to do the sidewalk and curb repairs that I mentioned. Paving will be later this summer. Work is still ongoing on the Washington and Cross Street Bridge projects. Lynch School traffic calming work will be bid in the next few weeks, and we'll be expecting to start that work hopefully this summer. The Leonard Field and McDonald Field Playgrounds, we have our consultant just analyzing the concept plans for those, and we're planning to schedule a preliminary design meeting with a variety of stakeholders, hopefully in the next few weeks. Pack Arrows Tennis Court Project is moving forward, and we'll probably come back to the board with some information about that project over the summer as well.
So Beth, on the Giff Field lights, what would we budget, like a couple hundred thousand dollars for that?
We had about 220,000, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's the revised estimate.
And so we're like, holy smokes?
It's more than we're able to pull together. We'll probably have to go back to capital for some additional funding. So we're still trying to understand what funds we might have available from the revolving funds from the grass field account, so that's something we're working with Nick on.
Thank you.
Yep. Vio Playground Surface will go out to bid next month. Phase one risk assessment work here at Town Hall, those cameras will be installed in the next few weeks, and we're still working on the exterior lighting. Morocco Culvert and South Reservoir Dam Projects will be out to bid in the next week or so. Morocco Culvert, I did just sign the license agreement with the MBTA last week.
Congrats.
We'll wait to get the counter sign document, but at least step one is completed.
That was easy, so.
That was, yeah. Took no time at all. So the bid opening for that project is scheduled for early July. As I've mentioned, we're not sure whether that work will be able to start this summer or will be pushed to a later date, but at least we'll be able to bid it and get the contractor on board. And then South Reservoir Dam is on schedule to be bid in the next few weeks, and that will start this summer, assuming the bids come in on budget. The Woodside Road winter pond improvements are all complete, so that actually, if you go out there, we've kind of done things piecemeal, but now we've sort of connected everything with a nice new sidewalk between the two sections of sidewalk without there. So it looks, I think it looks great. Very pleased with what we've been able to improve that area. Leonard Field Rapid Flashing Beacon, the curb bump outs are going in as we speak, and that flashing beacon will be installed shortly. I think we're all happy about that. And the other project I just wanted to mention is Cross Street Pedestrian Improvement. So Matt Schuman will be back at your meeting on June 3rd to talk about some potential traffic calming improvements around the corner, intersection of Forest and Cross Street, that we're hoping to have reviewed and discuss, so that we can have EverSource complete some of that work as they're doing their sidewalk and other repairs. So that'll be coming to you at your next meeting. And then I just wanted to mention, lastly, that the town administrator in Stonemont reached out to me. Their select board has drafted a letter to EverSource, I'm sorry, to the Department of Public Utilities and the EFSB about their experience with, working with EverSource on the 345 KV line. The question was whether we wanted to kind of co-sign on this memo. The memo is very detailed with respect to the construction hurdles that they experienced in Stonemont, so I'm not sure it makes sense for us to co-sign this exact letter, but I think the board may want to consider drafting a similar letter that we submit to the EFSB outlining our experience on both the 115 and the 345 line to help, you know, help for future permitted projects and potentially help herself as EverSource looks to do another project in Winchester.
Well, I mean, I think that we should use that in concert with asking for a much bigger impact fee because of the hundreds of thousands of hours of staff time that we allocate to this to, that does not directly benefit, or a small portion of benefits the town, it benefits the entire power grid. And so that seems like it should be allocated across the ratepayers, not Winchester taxpayers. So that's really how I'd like to approach it.
So, yeah, and creating the record is how we do that.
Yes. So I'm all, I'm all in favor.
Yeah, and this was really clear, this letter, and I think we could have a similarly clear memo.
I'd love to write it.
It's like secondary trauma, I think, to some degree.
Therapy.
Is there, what do you think the timeline is? You know, do we know when Stonemont intends, maybe, you know, does Wakefield or Reuben want to write one too? Are we trying to sort of like sequence them in every couple of weeks? Or what's the timing?
Yeah, so I think, again, I just received this last Thursday. I think they were trying to get something out in the next week or so, and I think we could certainly have something ready for your June 3rd meeting if the board wanted to have a draft to review at that time.
And I suspect, you know, whether we wish to go back to, you know, how much Winchester tried to litigate this and stop this, wherever our starting point is, whether that's 2018 or 2015, I think I would defer to you and staff. But Bob should weigh in on some details. I don't know that they, they didn't drill through our sewer line, right? But they certainly had some other challenges. And I think we have some pictures, I suppose, if that needed to be just part of it, but.
And I think to John's point too, regarding some of the mitigation that was offered, in a lot of ways, it was, you know, we thought this project was going to be pretty bad, and it was a lot worse for a lot of reasons, things that could have been prevented. And dealing with EverSource only restricting to mitigation to be right along the side of, you know, the impact area, you know, was not great for the neighborhood. And, you know, we fought this battle for a while, because this was the worst route for, you know, EverSource out of the ones that we looked at, and through environmental justice area. And it, you know, it ended up with parking and traffic and delays being something that I think that the EFSB should really look at in the future, because ultimately, if it was done right, it would have cost EverSource more to do this project. And I think that, that the cost there was not really benefiting the town, so. We certainly should send a letter.
Okay. And our thanks to Stonemont for taking the lead on this.
Absolutely. Yep.
Giving us a decent framework to run with, so thank you for that.
So before, Beth, a question. Can we get something definitive from the engineer for the Mystic School heating system?
Yeah, so we're working on that. I'm hopeful that we'll have something for the June 3rd meeting. If not, it'll definitely be the 17th, but the goal is to get something for you for the June 3rd.
Don't the delays been, it doesn't, I mean, it's been, it's been like three or four months?
Yeah, so I think it's, it's not been quite that long, because there was some time for us to get them on board through the designer selection process, but the timeline that we were given was the end of May, early June, so I'm really trying to target something for that June 3rd meeting. If not, it'll definitely be the 17th.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just on the Leonard Beacon, I asked about that, and all of a sudden, Bob was here, so I was going in. But just also to thank the DPW for being very responsive to the kids who are walking to and from Morocco in the morning to make, to shift kind of where the signage is on that, so it's easy to get past.
All right. Thank you, Beth. And I think we need to, depending on where Mystic School comes in in the next couple of meetings, we've got to revisit ARPA. I think we need to sort of look at what those, where that money's going to go, and having some commitments by the end of the calendar year, so let's see what that tells us. Okay? Any other questions for Beth? There was a lot there, Beth, thank you.
Thank you.
Lot going on when we were in town meeting.
How much, only if you know off the top of your head, do we have remaining in ARPA?
100% uncommitted, a couple hundred thousand dollars. But we have, like, things earmarked for the high school gym, for the Mystic School, and then we have that, I think, $300,000 for like the community projects.
So I think, so for community projects, I think by our second meeting in June, if we can have just an outline of how we might want to prioritize or consider, I think that'd be great. And then we can, you know, decide how much, how many grants we might issue or where those things might go. But if, just a heads up for you, Anthea, please, for the second one, that'd be good. Our June 17th meeting. Okay. All right. So that kind of moves us into Springtown meeting and Springtown meeting recap, which, then there's CPA next steps, so a lot came out of Springtown meeting. One of which was, I think it's in Beth's packet, and this kind of goes to select board goals as well. So when we were looking, when Anthea and I were working on work plan last year, we looked at some other cities and towns than select board work plans. And what do they do in terms of plans? How do they have, how do they pick their work plans? How do they prioritize? And several towns, and I can go back and find them, actually have, you know, fiscal goals, growth goals for their select board and their budget. So we aim to not grow, you know, we aim to live within 2.5%. We aim to keep expenses within 3%. We aim to not have an override unless or until some certain things happen. So one thing that came out of Springtown meeting that certainly resonated with me was, you know, I think FinCom told us more times than we'd like to count, hey, I inherited this deficit, right? We did what we could, we tried to find money. I'd like us as a board, not today, not tomorrow, to think about, do we want to publish a policy? Do we want to talk about guidelines? But how can we better prepare and work with the town manager in advance of the town budget, and work with FinCom and schools to set some expectations on growth that's realistic? One item that could be realistic is every five years, we have an override. That's, that could be possible. To the extent that we say for contracts that are being negotiated, union contracts are being negotiated, and other growth rates, if we don't keep it within some boundary that this board decides, right? I'm not going to, you know, spitball percentages. Contracts and costs that exceed some guidelines and boundaries that we set as a board may yield, you know, future cuts. We may not be able to grow at the same rate. It may cause impacts on staff or the ability to increase programming. So I just want to start there with Springtown meeting and get a sense from the other, you know, four of you. What do you think about sort of some budgetary and growth guidelines? Maybe not hard and fast policy, because reality can hit us in the face, right? Things could go sideways pretty hard. But guidelines, at least going into the next budget year? What do people think about taking that on? Maybe I volunteer, John and I since we're the fiscal people, but how does that sit with folks? Maybe I'll start with Mike, I'll go to my left.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And it helps us communicate to residents why we're making certain decisions. So if there's a deficit, or, you know, there's additional funds that we have from reversions, we can communicate that it would be nice to use them for something fun or something that is discretionary, but it's, you know, it's important that we reinvest in, you know, our policy in order to keep growth at a lower level. We've seen water sewer rates rise substantially. We've seen transfer station permits, taxes. We have borrowing to do for the Lynch Project. We have borrowing to do for Project 10. So, you know, we want to make sure that our growth is kept in line, and I think we need to kind of work with the finance committee and, you know, have, have a conversation about what's reasonable. So when we have things like the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund or the Special Education Stabilization Fund, those, you know, further our efforts to keep within, you know, that, I don't want to say 2.5%, I mean, that may be unrealistic, but, you know, within that, that certain goal, growth goal. So I think it's a good idea, so I'm glad that you brought it up. Thank you.
Okay. Bill?
I'm just pile on agreement here. I think that Mike just did a really good job of explaining why whatever we do should be considered guidelines, because there's going to be, there always is, so much that we don't control and that we can't expect. But without guidelines, we're just kind of moving ad hoc. And that doesn't allow for planning, that doesn't allow for good fiscal management of any sort. And one thing that you already mentioned, Michelle, is the fact that this is a multifaceted thought process, that it's not just necessarily tamping down our spending, but it's also looking for new sources of funding. I don't think any of us want to rush to override, but there's, that's something we always have to think about. And baking in, and having some sort of plan in advance that approaches this problem from all angles is going to make our lives easier down the road. And when we have to take tough decisions to the voters, it's going to prove to them that we have looked at things from every different angle possible, and we're doing the best we can with what we have. So, a stitch in time saves nine, and it seems like a smart idea to, that we should have started a long time ago. They say the best time to start saving is, what, 10 years ago? And the second best day is right now, so let's get going.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, at town meeting, finance committee came and said, here's this list of sort of upcoming things, right? And I don't think that, I think, you know, budget year to budget year feels responsive to the things that are happening, but also, you know, that, none of those were news to anybody, right? We all know that Lynch is happening, that Morocco is coming, that all these things. So I think it would be nice to, to have that clear documentation and analysis of what are, what are the things that we look at year to year, and what are the things that we know are coming down the pike toward us? Another consideration is to look at our operating reserves policy, which we talk about looking at a lot. We haven't done anything with in the, in the past, you know, two years that I've been on the board. So taking a look at that and whether we should adjust it, because it's been talked about quite a bit.
I'm just like a person who wants to have trust in government. So I think that if we boil this manifesto down to three pages, that any resident can go and look and see and understand the way we think, right? Here's our growth plans, this is how, here's our capital plan, here's what we use to base that on. It's just really simple process, and then we can have a much bigger document behind that that we build out with the FinCom and all of the stakeholders. But then when we, if we need to raise revenue, and let's say it's through an override, we say, you know, we've been clear and consistent on how we approach things, and no one maybe feels, is excited by the prospect of having to raise revenue that way, but it's understandable and it's not a surprise.
I think what kind of, so thank you, John, thanks everybody. So I think what really landed it for me was, we are very much downstream of other people's decisions, right? So FinCom's downstream maybe of us when they get a budget. But decisions made, you know, contracts that were negotiated, and, you know, other administrations and other boards and other groups that are growing year over year, when we have a 2.5% and they're, you know, 5% or 12% or 20%, that has impacts. And the only people that can do anything about potentially capital over, I'm sorry, operating overrides is this board. So perhaps we want to have a voice in understanding how we got here, or managing that narrative and managing expectations. So I think that's what really resonated for me, is, you know, there's been decisions in the past, we can move forward with some guidelines, perhaps we're not going to be. Perhaps we're not going to be, maybe we'll be, you know, not running a structural deficit all the time, but we can at least be really eyes wide open about, hey, if we're negotiating a new contract with teachers, we want to talk with the superintendent of the school committee and say, this is where we're, this is where we'd like it to land, or police and fire. And if it doesn't land here, here are some of the trade offs. Because every contract negotiation shouldn't be like, oh, this year's override is for this union contract and next year's override is for that contract. Let's understand what the impacts are. Let's understand what we can live with. So, okay.
I think the other thing too, just kind of coming out of this town meeting, something that you mentioned, I mean, I think us moving away from kind of fear-based decision-making will be helpful and putting some of this on paper will be helpful. Speaking to other select boards in other communities, they seem to have more of an advanced meeting schedule with, with FinCom in particular. So it's not, you know, right before town meeting or, and I think we just need to break away from this narrative that FinCom doesn't care about the schools or FinCom doesn't care about, you know, health and safety. If they're, you know, I think they have a different objective sometimes than, than we do and their objective is somewhat a protective one of town meeting. And so I hope that we can work with them better in the future to, just to be on the same page. And we may not always agree, but I think it's fair to say, everybody's a volunteer. Everybody cares about the town. Everybody cares about the schools. And maybe that will bring us together on, you know, future policy objectives as well. So.
Yep. Okay.
I'll just add, we have, to Mike's point, we have a, generally a budget summit in January.
Yes.
Where we invite chair and vice chair of FinCom and a school committee. But maybe it's also expanding that, that it becomes quarterly or it becomes more regular during the budget time so that those conversations are not perceived to be held in vacuums.
I think it would be helpful to start that work in the summer and early fall so that by the time I'm sending stuff out to department heads, like in November, beginning in November usually, and for things to be due like December first, and the schools, you know, probably have a similar timeline that everybody has those expectations set when they're thinking about their departmental growth.
Yep. So quarterly reviews certainly of the budget, whether it's budget summits, whatever we want to call it, but I agree. And the other thing I think I heard this, this budget season was just the timing of our budget with, in talking with superintendent and the school committee chair. In January, we asked them for January 31st and then February 15th when FinCom gets it. And then, you know, you have a better sense of out-of-district tuitions and how some IEPs are shaking out. You have a better sense of retirements as you get closer to April. But the, the budget is due January 31st and there's a lot of movement. So even if we were talking quarterly in April, right before FinCom is publishing their budget, just having quarterly readouts. We get reports in the comptroller all the time. Let's get people in the room and say, where are we September, October? Where are we January? Where are we end of March, beginning of April? Maybe there's some happy surprises, maybe there's some not so happy surprises, but we're, we're at least being responsive to what we know at the time, not four-month-old information. So, okay. So we'll get moving on getting something set up. We're going to have some, lots of meetings coming up, but that's okay. So thanks, everybody, for hearing that and thinking it's a good idea. We'll, we'll get going on it. Other, before, I know CPA was another big piece of Springtown meeting, but I wanted this on the agenda from recap, certainly I wanted to talk about growth rates, but did anything else jump out at folks that we signed up to do? I know we have to get some CPA, we have to get a ballot question on, we have to talk about kind of some of those subcommittees or advisory committees to look at the rules. Any other to-dos that we, that we think we, you know, raised our hand for that we want to be mindful of? There need not be. That's okay.
I don't remember.
I know. It all runs together, but.
I'm sure somebody watching at home will remind us.
You guys said you'd do this.
Right, yep.
But I'm just wondering if anything else jumped out.
We're starting the borrowing process for these projects, so they'll be, will be before you probably in July. We'll be going to market over the next month or so to borrow for those projects that we, that we, the Woodside Pump Station, South Reservoir Dam, and Lynch School, traffic improvements.
And when do we expect to borrow on the Morocco culvert?
We already borrowed.
Oh, we already borrowed, okay.
Yep.
Great. We just raised our authorization. Okay. So let's then pivot into CPA. So we know out of Articles nine and 10, Article nine, we have, and we have a memo from the town clerk that was at table tonight, that there's a ballot question that needs to be with the town clerk no later than September 4th for processing. So we got a little bit of time on that. And we also have a committee that the select board will convene to look at implementation, right? The advisory group out of the bylaw in Article 10. So if you want to talk maybe ballot question first, I'm going to throw it to Beth here for a second, but we had Jay clarify for us, sort of, select board can't be the head of a CPA ballot campaign. We can't be using town resources for that purpose. But maybe we could ask if Mike and Anthea had some thoughts about ballot question and then Beth, if you want to set the table with what we can and can't do as a select board relative to the ballot question. I'm ignoring that advisory process committee for just now. We'll talk about the ballot question.
So I think included in your packet was an advisory that town council had forwarded me that was from the State Ethics Commission that talks about what the role of an elected official is in these sort of ballot initiatives. I think generally it's that you can advocate on a personal level, but we can't use town resources. Like we can't do a town-wide mailing that town pays for advocating for a position one way, the, the other on a, on a ballot question. But we can do, provide factual information, I think. We had, the assistant town manager had mentioned the ballot initiative that was done for the Morocco culvert and the Morocco school immediate repairs that was packaged as one, as one ballot question, that there was a series of information sessions that, that select board did with the school committee for that. So it might be something that we were able to do from informational perspective, building on what we already presented to, to Springtown meeting. But I think the question is, as Michelle mentioned, whether there'd be a separate outside committee set up to advocate for the, for the question.
And so I know it's been like a minute since we just wrapped up town meeting, so I'm not suggesting that the CPA working group is like, yes, I'm going to be the face of it. But just didn't know, Anthea and Mike, if, if that's sort of next step, now that we got Article nine, it's going to go to the voters? If there's some thought about what then, what form that might take?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think a couple of things, we, you know, probably should send a letter to the study committee just saying, thank you very much and, you know, we're moving on to the next step of the process and it's been successful and appreciate all your hard work. And kind of also indicate that we're going to be rolling out some kind of formal campaign at some point. I mean, I think that makes sense. And I think a lot of people have asked about that already when, you know, when we're, you know, what the timeline is that. So maybe kind of really hit the ground running in early fall, but start developing it over the summer.
Is the committee formally dissolved or?
No.
No. There was no formal dissolution of that.
Right. No, that's fine. I mean, perhaps we can still send a thank you. It's a great idea. Whether the group wants to meet and decide in terms of any sort of like outreach to voters, who might or how, I think we all can meet.
That might be helpful just to have Jay weigh in on that because that is comprised of a majority of, I guess, a handful of elected, but a majority of appointed individuals. And so what they also can and cannot do in terms of a ballot question is, is appointed positions.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can do a lot in our individual capacities, it's just, you know, just town resources are the, you know, the kind of bright line there.
Right, we can do. Yes. So town resources and with our individual capacities, if, if we're doing an information session and Anthea's at the table and John's on Zoom and we're here as a select board person in a public hearing or a public meeting with Zoom, we're there in that capacity. Individually, we can say any number of things. We just aren't speaking on behalf of the other four members of the board, so.
Right. And there's, and there's, you know, for a ballot question committee and a mailing, should that not be someone who's appointed? Just, you know, what the, both what the law says and what the perception is, that if Jay can provide that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Looking to David in the audience as well, because he was very involved in the, in the study committee, but I know also, you know, sits on appointed boards.
Right. I think it'd be good to maybe have Jay in, we can have that conversation.
Yep.
Yep.
Let's try to get him in in the next one, in the next couple of meetings, either in person or on the phone and talk about that.
You guys had consultants for this, for the CPA working group too, didn't you? No?
You had access to CPA resources at the state.
We had conversations with the CPA, C, Community Preservation Coalition.
Coalition.
Coalition. I'll get it wrong.
Those are the folks who recommended doing it in a presidential election year and whatnot.
So I think they provide, now, once you have the question on the ballot, I think maybe they provide a little bit more engagement, but they have a lot of resources and a lot of materials on their website that are publicly available.
And they connected us with other communities as well that kind of provided us with their, you know, strengths and weaknesses about how they went through the process and everything. So, but they, they have a, just their website has a wealth of information as well. So we certainly use them as a major resource, but they, it's not like they were, you know, going there right along with us, the process.
Sure. But it's, I think my question is, do they have resources we can use to structure whatever we're going to do next? Help guide us from town meeting to the ballot?
So when you look at this, I'm sorry.
Like a roadmap?
Yes.
I don't know if there's a roadmap, but they have resources chunked out in different things.
So we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
We do not.
Okay.
So do you look and say like, there's two months of public education for the surprise? So it'd be after Labor Day is when, is when, for lack of a better term, a roadshow would start. That's public education and so forth, mailings, whatever, whatever that consists of. So if it's after that, so then we're now looking at between now and Labor Day, having that group get together and get whatever act they're going to get together to be ready to go after Labor Day. Just, you know, you fall into the, you know, July and August, maybe you're going to work at half-speed kind of thing. I'm just looking to say, hey, look at, you know, the time is now. It's going to get away from us if we all think it's a good idea on whatever. I'm not, I don't want to cross that line, but, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and fundraising will be a part of it. I mean, as part of, you know, we're, it's outreach in a, you know, short period of time to, you know, residents. So there, I think campaigns have mailings and signage and, you know, different events. And so I think that'll be, that, that'll take us a little, little while to get off the ground.
Okay. And where we're still in the ballot question, the note from the town clerk, I assume, and maybe I'm assuming incorrectly, the ballot question that goes on is probably the same ballot question that's gone on in a hundred and seventy odd other cities and towns. Okay. So we can get that. We just need to not miss the deadline for Wednesday, the day after.
Yeah, I feel like we could probably do this like in July, so we can just check that off our list.
We can be done.
Or right now. I mean, it's the same, it's the same thing. I mean, we, you know, we used, you know, kind of the boilerplate stuff for Article nine as well.
Article nine. Makes sense. So Beth, do you want to keep us honest to make sure we get that to our Ellen?
Yeah, that was on my list.
The language is pretty standard. We're not going to get clever.
What's that?
Hat? Yes, maybe.
I don't know.
Right. Voted hat?
Voted that. There you go. All right.
Maybe.
So should the, I, I think, thank you for the CPA working group makes sense. Maybe let us know, Anthea and Mike, if there's, if the group convenes again, if there's anything else out of that that we need to know. And we'll get Jay perhaps to come to us with some guidance on who could be the face or what could be the face. So now if we move then to the advisor, section eight of the bylaw, the advisory, following town meeting approval of this bylaw, this didn't start with hat, it started with following, the select board shall convene an advisory committee to make recommendations to the WCCP, et cetera, et cetera, regarding implementation, shall include a representative from, this is, so again, this is the select board convening this, right? A representative from the capital planning committee, historical commission, as designated by the finance committee but not of their members, field management committee, housing partnership board, affordable housing trust, conservation commission, planning board, and the Winchester Housing Authority. So again, we're coming into the summer, though I, there may be a chance to make some hay in June. This work, this advisory committee terminates effective, you know, when this, if the CPA passes, when the CPA passes. But this work probably needs to be done a little bit in advance of that ballot question, but certainly part of, I believe, that public outreach. So I'm curious what thoughts people have around the membership? Do we want to go out and look at different representatives from those various groups? Would, would it be as our select board liaisons and leads on this to the capital planning, CPA working group? What do you think about this working group? Have you had any thoughts? Because we don't need to, again, don't need to decide today, but if we do want to tap some people, did you guys have any thoughts or discussions on that?
Can you read that list?
I sure will.
I have not.
I decided to pull it up again.
I did not memorize it.
A representative from capital planning, historical commission, finance committee but not of its members, field management committee, housing partnership board, affordable housing trust, conservation commission, planning board, and the Winchester Housing Authority. And we assume the town manager will be involved in that, but those were the named roles.
And those were a reflection of what was, you know, really in section one of the, you know, bylaw. So, you know, the only thing that I would say at this point is, you know, where we've been successful in the past is where we kind of have a, a specific charge to this group and kind of some deliverables. So it doesn't get, because it really is a short period of time and it's advisory. And so, you know, we don't want it to, to, you know, blow up to daily meetings and, you know, a, a treatise that comes out of it because it may still not pass, right? So I mean, it's, but there are a lot of communities around here, Arlington, Lexington, and certainly others that, that do this very well. And they've had the benefit of their process evolving over a period of time. And so some outreach to them, I think, is probably healthy to us, healthy for us as we, we go through the process.
So could we ask for each of these boards at their next scheduled meeting to appoint a member from their board?
Or at least think about appointing a member.
To that?
Sure.
And then presumably that can happen by the middle or the end of June and then can, you know, sort of get things together and convene maybe once over, so summer is hard, but, you know, over, once over the summer and then into the fall.
And could I task you two with coming up with the first draft of the charge for that group? Like deliverables, outputs, or the questions we want to answer?
Yep.
Okay. So I think, Anthea, a good idea to ask if they can appoint or at least think about appointing so that maybe by middle of June, we have names. We can ask by whatever it is. We're meeting on the third, maybe by June 12th or June 14th. So if they haven't met by then, have a meeting, have a few people that might be voluntold.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that can.
Do you want me to send an email to the chair?
Yes, please.
That would be great. And, and maybe to, the ask is so that that can be into our packet for the 17th.
Yep.
Yeah, because some of the, the committees, some of the chairs appoint, that's their process, but also some of them have to have a vote to appoint people to other. That's just, everybody has a different process, so.
Right. And I don't know if the, any of these chairs are reorganizing after town meeting. I know the finance committee is, though it's not of their members, but they are going to reorganize. So if you could, Beth, and give us a sense by like June 12th, June 14th? I think the 14th is, well, you need it for the packet, so June 12th.
The packet, June 12th, yeah.
June 12th. Okay. And I think as you're thinking about the charge, right? Anthea, you mentioned it, but I don't know how often the CPA working group was meeting, but I think frequency too, right? Like, oh, can you join my group? Well, how, how heavy is the lift? We know this lift is time limited. That's the good news. It's not going to go on forever. A vote in November will be a fate, you know, there'll be some fate to the CPA. A vote in November will be a fate, you know, there'll be some fate to the CPA, but some expectation of, this is the work we're trying to do, this is the frequency we expect, I think will be helpful, so, Beth, if you could just let them know we're gonna ask, and we'll try to give some high-level guidance, but if, if they can meet in the next three weeks, that would be ideal. Okay? Anything else on the CPA? Good job, by the way?
Yeah, it's great.
Had a really strong, like, it was nice to see the vote again and, and writing.
Thank you, it's a team effort, so thank you, everyone.
One thirty-two to twenty-one, so, okay. Community study capital funding, this is the John Fallon Show, just kidding. We should do a similar thing, that coming up with a charge and membership, which I think in the fall, we met with, as we said at town meeting, Finance Committee, Capital Planning, Town Manager, John and myself, we also had DPW there with Pete Lawson, just really looking at, you know, what's the, what's the state, the state of our facilities and our buildings. I'm happy to start there again, and I also think in the fall, we, we kinda get, we got a meeting or two underway before we invited the Finance Committee in, I wanna make sure that they're sort of from the beginning, whoever that may be, and I think John and I can work together, the same way I asked Anthea and Mike to come up with a charge, what are we trying to do? I think John and I can promise to have that, if not by June 3rd, by the 17th, what's the charge of this committee to study capital funding? We said at town meeting, what are the sources, right, what options do we have? What, and then what priorities do we have as well, so I think over the summer, to the extent that the Select Board will have capital priorities that we think we want to share with Capital Planning, or we think are just important to solve for in the next fiscal year, the next two fiscal years, being respectful of the capital cycle, what are some things that we think are really important to get investment in sooner than later? What are some specific projects, what are some specific buildings, and how might that happen? So, that's my sense on that group, but I'm gonna stop talking and let others.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if school committee should be involved with that, and DPW has-
Yes.
Oh, great.
Yes, I probably didn't say it out loud, but you're absolutely right. Yes. Other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I know that you had mentioned, you know, in the past when we created this committee, that we weren't going to look at the, the ranking process as well, I, I think that's kind of fundamental to the capital process, is how we rank and what the lens is that we see, and I know that it's, people are, you know, certainly protective of that process. I don't think it works well for us, and I think it, it, you know, it, it, again, it's a process that's advisory to the Town Manager with her capital improvement plan and town meeting, and I think that, you know, our health and safety priorities really need to be weighted more heavily when we're looking at it, not just projects people like for certain reasons, right? So we leave a lot open to personal discretion with our ranking process, and, you know, so I hope that we consider that as well, so. And again, looking at what other communities do, you know, we're not the only community Massachusetts has a capital planning process.
Does it, Beth, does maybe someone in your, it's not your capacity anymore, but your wheelhouse of, like, does Town Engineer belong there? Because, you know, Matt is gonna have that more detailed level of things like streets, bridges, waterways.
Yeah, I think, I think we should start with a core group of people, and then we can invite as we need folks in. The projects, when we, when we met last fall, we were focused on a lot of the kind of building-related projects that were, had kind of moved to the top of the line with roofs and other needs, and so Pete was part of that conversation, as was Chris Nixon as a member of the EFPBC. So I think there's some flexibility of, as the conversations evolve, we can kind of pull people in as needed.
Makes sense. Okay.
The one thing that I wanted to mention, not specifically for this group, but part of the overall capital picture is that we just had a staff meeting with representatives from Gordian, who are the, the firm we work with, to update our VFA software, and they are ready. They kind of gave us the initial presentation, and now we're ready to roll that out into a wider stakeholder group. I would really like to do, try to do that before we get into the summer season, so my thought is that we would put together a stakeholder group with Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, I'd invite the School Committee, invite EFPBC. I was kind of thinking we would just notice it as a joint meeting with, of everybody, so there's no concern of, if there's more than two members there. I guess the question is whether we wanna try to do, like, a morning or an evening meeting, evenings, I'm looking at my own personal calendar, I'm filling up very quickly as the end of the school year approaches, so I just wanted to get the, kind of, the board's thoughts before I try to schedule something.
I think the last time that we did this, it was open to everyone, and it was kind of a Friday morning, one thing on the agenda thing, and at least, you know, try to get one person from every boarding committee that's able to make it, but there ended up being quite a lot of people there and a lot of questions, right? So, 'cause it's just kind of a-
It's a lot, it's a lot.
It's a lot, it's a lot, so, and you need, you really need kind of the, the folks there that are, you know, know the tool well to answer those questions, so.
And we can record it, so we can, we can play it back, I, I do, I also prefer a morning, but.
I think it would be Zoom.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Could it be recorded?
Yes.
We can record it, yep.
It'd have to be what?
It'd be better to be on a webinar.
Yeah.
Yes. Mornings, evenings?
Maybe, either.
Either, preference?
If it's a webinar, morning is fine, especially if it's recorded.
Okay, so we'll shoot for morning in June?
Yeah, so maybe June 7th.
I cannot do that. But it's recorded, so it's, I believe that's field day at Morocco.
Oh, it's that season. Okay, see if, we'll see what VFA can do.
We'll see what they can do, yep. The other piece I wanted to mention is that VFA does, besides this sort of assessment piece, they do offer other services to work with communities to help take this data and then create like a five- or ten-year capital plan out of it, which is something I think that we should kind of understand what options we have available to us, it's, it's a, it's a lot of data, right, and I wanna make sure that we're using it in the way that best suits our community, as opposed to just having all this data there, right? So I think that's one of the things that I would like to explore with them, is what, what can they help us do? How can they help us take this data and go to the next step, which is creating that more detailed five-to-ten-year plan?
So we should solicit a proposal from them to do that?
Yeah, so I think we wanted, I did mention it to the gentleman we, we spoke with, and I think we wanted to kind of get through this next stakeholder meeting and then, and go into this next conversation.
If we could have a sense, as you're having that scheduling with them, you know, ballpark of what that is, because on, you know, doing consulting, if there's a work product, now, if something we're never gonna buy, 'cause it's some massive, you know, investment of money, but if we think that there's a number that doesn't sound outrageous, they could be, that could be part of the demo, right? Here's all this data, and here's how we package it up, and here's a deliverable that we could have, that would be useful to see it in action?
Sure.
Right, this we spit out, or this is what it looks like, so that it's something that you can actually digest, so, but I'd hate to show it, like, oh, that cool plan that we're never gonna buy.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And a, a sort of follow-up question to that is understanding, what does that mean for them to create a five- or ten-year plan? What are the, like, if you have Amazon Subscribe and Save, and you don't need any more sun butter for the rest of the year, you can go in and, and change it, and put it back, so what is the flexibility within VFA that it builds us a five-year plan, and then we say, actually, like, we don't need whatever the sun butter of municipal buildings is, we're good?
Go over here.
Yeah, I think it's, it changes every year, right, it's not like we set it and forget it. In ten years, we're gonna be doing what we said we were gonna do in 2024, so, but I think- we need some, there has to be a human element to interpretation of the data, and setting those goals and setting priorities, and
And like reviewing those things.
And the reality of, like, what's in the field, like, you know, nobody thought we'd replace the Morocco boiler, like, whatever, seven or eight years after we installed it, but here we are, because things happen, right, so build it, you have to be able to build that into, that flexibility into your plan.
So thank you for bringing up VFA.
I'm reading Mike's eyes, he's like, what about ChatGPT four?
But no, thank, I, I think it's, you know, to have the information and the raw data, it almost is, it's, it's not useful without that five-to-ten-year plan, I mean, that's their business model essentially, is like, you know, dumping all that information and being like, you know, see if you need us now, right? And we do, especially if we're going in, we will be going to the residents for general override and a capital override in the next few years, and having that plan in place, I think, you know, and being able to, you know, for residents to be able to digest, digest some of it too, is, is gonna be helpful, especially with this, with the CPA, if that passes, so.
We invested to upgrade it, we might as well use it.
Yeah.
Being, to your whole point about trusting government being responsible stewards, right, shouldn't just, well, that was nice, okay. So now we can move on to, if, are we good on capital funding, and thank you for that VFA demo, Beth, that's a great idea. Select Board Committee assignments, I think the goal for committee assignments was, for tonight, was to share them with Bill, and so he sees sort of what they are.
Yellow, yellow ones.
I might trade you for a couple, Bill, 'cause I already met with the Chamber of Commerce last week, so I might, I might take that one, but not necessarily to make decisions tonight, but really just have a sense of, like, what's out there, and as you'll see, and we'll talk about staff performance reviews next, we think we have two new committees, right, we wanna make sure, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about staff performance reviews as our next agenda item, but we also have that Section Eight Advisory Committee that we just discussed, so that's gonna need a Select Board member or two on it. I was looking, I don't know if anyone else was surprised, it's like, oh, I was on the Retiree Health Insurance Committee, I think I might have blown off a few meetings. Oops, maybe Bill should take me, my place there, but yes, I think a lot of the yellow bill, if, if you want, but I think we can take this up at our next meeting, unless people felt really strongly that they wanted to get, trade some things, get rid of some things. Are any of these, can any of these come off, Beth and Patty, I'm looking at, for some, I mean, I think, like, for me, I was on the Transfer Station Working Group, we were trying to revisit Pay As You Throw, that kind of went out the, you know, the window with recycling rates and things. The CPA committee can kind of at some point sunset, right? That might pivot some of the work into advisory, but do we, do we think any of these are potentially?
I think that Town Center Initiative was that original, I believe it was originally kind of traffic calming plan that we've now taken to the next step, so I think that probably doesn't need to be a working group anymore.
Is that also the Parking Committee?
I'll leave that to you guys, the parking.
Okay, well.
I don't think there's any meetings currently happening.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were quite a few at one point, and-
There will be, I'm sure, at some point in the future.
What about the MBTA train station?
So that working group is, has not met since the design was finalized. We could just keep it at-
Look at us.
As a hold for the moment, but I don't think there'll be any-
So maybe we won't fill that yellow box?
Yeah, but I don't think there'll be, I don't foresee any meetings at this point.
Okay, here I am, working backward, bottom to top, Winchester Cultural District, that remains Town Center Parking, we're saying that remains Transfer Station. If it reconvenes, I'll stay there, MBTA is on hold, Housing Production Plan Update is underway. Fields Master Plan, Anthea, do we still have such a thing contemplated?
I think there was a master plan done several years ago.
Maybe it's done?
So there may be another one in the future.
Okay, so it's kind of on hold?
But there's nothing act, nothing currently active.
But we're not gonna kill it yet either, okay.
We do have the Communications?
I was just gonna say, yeah, yep.
That was John and I.
John, yep.
That's right.
That's wrapping up, so.
Okay. CPA, that, you can probably have maybe one last meeting with your working group, but that's gonna probably sunset, that CPA committee, okay. The pilot we talked about earlier, Wildwood, T-TAC, I do wanna talk, maybe in June or July, but I do wanna have a discussion with our board around T-TAC, and they resigned, they disbanded. Do we want to bring that sort of focus and lens back? And if so, similar to what we're gonna do with, you know, the advisory group, what is the charge, right? Some of the, the concern and, and some of the frustration was, they weren't empowered to make decisions, 'cause we're the street wardens, but I think that having them and having a process and having a group looking at traffic was useful, but before we just let them die from attrition, I wanna just have a conversation about, does it come, does it make sense to reconfigure it and reconvene with a different town, with a different focus and a different charge, so that's to be revisited anyway.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, because, you know, have a conversation with them, and, you know, we had an, an initial charge, you know, for, for that, and we you know, created a, a kind of a large work plan for, for, for roads, and and I think that it kind of morphed into something that we didn't necessarily, you know, see coming, which would, you know, some of it was beneficial, some of it wasn't, but defining that role in the future of having more resonant input in things related to traffic, you know, is important, and really kind of managing expectations of our, our investment in traffic projects, so I think that a lot of us feel like some of that is kind of, you know, gotten a little bit away from us over the, you know, the past few years, so.
Yep. So we'll discuss that as a group, but just be thinking about it, so it's, maybe resurrect it, we'll see. Retiree Health Insurance Advisory, I think I'm just a deadbeat on that one. Planning Board, yes, Permanent Street Tree Committee, there it is, John.
Finished us a long time.
Energy Management, Disability Access, Council on Aging.
I'm happy to take that one, if it's-
Yeah, if you want me to speak, like, I'm happy to jump on Planning Board, I think that-
Okay.
Kind of fits together with some of what I-
The DAP, the disability access?
Done.
Okay. I was just going, okay, so I was just gonna go up, see if we can kill more, but then we can go right back down too, that's fine.
Okay.
Not kill, that's a bad verb.
Oh, I thought, sorry.
Council on Aging, seniors, yes, Conservation Commission, Chamber of Commerce, I'll stick myself in there. Capital Planning, Cable Advisory, do we still have a Cable Advisory Committee? We do, very much, okay.
So that does need a representative, definitely, because their horizon's coming back to wanting to use it.
Starting to renegotiate for the next cycle.
I, I like TV.
I was thinking you like to negotiate, so there's that. Okay, Housing Partnership Board, Fields Management Committee, I guess I'm thinking of that Fields Master Plan too, but we still have one, right?
Field Management Committee?
Yes, okay, Committee on Names, you wanna stay, okay, stay with that. Audit Advisory, yep, and Affordable Housing Trusts, okay. So, does anybody wanna, we, we can make some trades or not, we can come back to this in a couple of weeks, unless people feel strongly like, I wanna stick with everything I have, we can also just go back and think about it, and come back in two weeks with some thoughts, or you can communicate with Beth and I.
I mean, I'm also happy to jump on the, the backup to capital. That's, that's in yellow.
Yep.
Like those guys?
All right.
Mike, I know you talked about the housing, being on those for a while, I don't know if you have strong feelings on either of the two?
Yeah, you know, I, I guess I've been on the Partnership Board the longest, if you want to, to jump on that, I could come off, if that's what your feeling is, or, or be backup or whatever.
Yeah, I have no, I have no strong feelings, I know what you're, we were talking about it, as we're talking about some of the CPA, that that's where you've sat for a long time.
I mean, that was my example of, of, you know, people being on committees too long, was me being on that one, that was like the most obvious one, and so it's obviously something that I've, you know, I enjoy, and I spent a lot of time on it over the years, but you know, but it, but it is almost ten years for me on that, that committee, and if somebody else is, is interested, you know, I certainly wouldn't stand in their way.
All right.
I'm happy to join it on a, sort of, as they were stemming from CPA.
Yep, okay.
I, I could back her up too, to help out with that, if that's-
Okay.
Is, is there any rhyme or reason why some of these have backups and some of them don't?
I'm not aware of one.
Okay.
Um, I will say, I don't know that the Committee on Names has met since I've, I've been on it, so I don't think that needs backup.
I, I looked at some of these in the pamphlet that we have, all the different boards and committees, and when they meet and everything else, I still didn't really get a good sense of what all of them do, or, or how much any of them do.
Yep.
So, you know, some of these things I'm jumping up and I'm saying, yeah, I'm happy to help out, but a few others, I'd like to ask a few questions first.
So let's maybe just pause where we're at, and Patty, I'll, I'll share with you what I took down anyway, we can update it for two weeks. So let's pause, and Bill, if you wanna go find some more information out, Mike, you can decide that you definitely wanna sort of not be on Housing Partnership, and then we'll make sure that that-
Yeah, or it could be backup or, or whatever, you know, if somebody else wants to be primary on it. on it, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so let's come back to this, but we'll have an updated list back around. And, and Bill, to your point about why are there backups, I think generally it's if one of us can't make it, you know, if the other one can. You know, I raised my hand for the pilot, and I think I've been at all the meetings, and this was Rich and I, and, I mean, you know, sometimes we don't negotiate, well, we're trying to negotiate for a three-year agreement, this one just happens to be dragging out of it, so. I don't think this one needs a backup, we're close to done, is my point, right? This one, that doesn't need a second, so, it's fine. All right, so we'll, more to come on this, and if Communication Study Committee, right, or Communication Plan, we'll put that down as another committee for ourselves, okay. Now, I've lost track of my own agenda. Staff Performance Reviews, so we only have two more things, and then the Consent Agenda, good. So we talked about this when we were back in March, when it was Stacy's contract was up, Beth, you know, we have a contract with Beth, and we really talked about as a board, and I don't think we got too far before June, right? We're almost into June, but actually having a performance review process, having some goals for our manager, for the people that report to us, we have the Town Council contract, so we only have three direct reports, we have the Comptroller, we have Town Council, and we have the Town Manager. But really trying to be thoughtful about, what is performance review, what do they look like, what's the frequency, and let's be consistent in doing so. So what do we do? Let's form a committee, maybe, but maybe it's really not much of a committee of staff performance reviews, but who can really just run with setting up a process that we think we can actually, you know, follow with some fidelity, not, that's great, but we never do a review. Mike, I, maybe I would ask you and Beth or Patty for some perspective on, in previous configurations of the board, you know, were we really good at one time, and we just sort of didn't do it as consistently, or is this something that we-
Chair doesn't-
Yeah, right, that's all on me, that's good too. I'm just curious if we had a good pattern to sort of like fall back on, if we had something that was working, or if we really do want to just start from scratch, because I don't really have a strong preference about, other than, I don't know that I want to be the one to do it, but-
We have, we have a good process that has evolved over a period of time, it's more of a 360 review process, and I think that, that helps us to, you know, hear from, you know, other direct reports and other staff members, and, you know, also other members of the community and stakeholders, and so we spend a lot of time on that process with Labor Council, and so I don't really remember, I remember it was pretty involved, but, you know, maybe that we do something pretty close to that, I think makes sense.
Is there a Labor Council these days? Still Morgan?
Yeah, Morgan Brown and Joy.
Morgan Joy, yep.
Who is it?
Morgan Brown and Joy. We work with Dave Conley.
So I think, Bill? Can you perhaps join me on that one?
I'd be happy to join you on that one, Michelle.
Or maybe just run with it, Bill? Bill, I'll put my name there too.
Like, you're in the left column, and Michelle's in the right column.
That's where I brought her in, right there, left column is you, I'll go on the right.
She's off the margin there.
Not that we're going to do anything before our next meeting in two weeks, but I do think we need to, in fairness to Beth, we should have a review for Beth sometime, you know, in the near future, not like next month. We should have a process for the Comptroller, and we really want to be mindful of when, when contract sunset, and not just trot out a process that's, you know, oh, January is Beth's contract, well, December, you know, Merry Christmas, here's a performance review, let's be a little bit more thoughtful and give ourselves some time to do a really, you know, let's think about management goals, let's think about objectives, let's hear from, from Beth and from Stacy and Town Council of-
So J's contract is in fiscal year, right?
Yep.
So-
That was the executive session item we didn't get to this evening.
Yes. So we're going to have to get to that next time.
I think we have, I was just trying to see if I could bring it up, but I think we also have a couple of examples of previous review documents.
That was going to be my question, who has those, and, oh, so-
Patty.
I'm going to ask you to send me all of them, if you can.
Yep. And we'll have an update, at least, but we do have to talk about Town Council on our next meeting on the 3rd. And let's see what we have, just even as an outline, Bill, if we could be, okay?
Yeah, no, funny enough, I've heard, I've had a number of members of other boards and committees come up to me and ask if this was going to be something the Select Board was going to do. It seems like they have thoughts they want to share, so. It might not be a hard ball to get rolling. Everybody wants to say how great Beth is, that's all it is.
I remember as FinCom Chair, I think I responded to one for Richard Howard at one time. So, you know, I don't remember the frequency, I don't remember the season, really, it doesn't matter, but we did, and we should, I think it's fair to have some broad perspective, so. Okay, so thank you, we're going to commit to it, and we'll have a process, and we'll do some reviews. Okay, so I think the last thing is Arbor Day, and there's a motion.
Yes, there is, there is. Please, the move that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation and authorize the chair to sign the proclamation.
Would be revised?
What is the proclamation?
Yeah, it needs to be revised, it has to be revised.
Yeah, not be revised.
Oh, as revised, no?
So we are, just some background information, we are a Tree City USA since 2012.
That we are.
And as one of the items that you have to do to be a Tree City USA is have a day proclaimed as Arbor Day, we typically do it on Town Day, and then we have a tree ceremonial tree planting.
Spend $2 a resident, right?
We do, yep.
I want to say it was a wonderful ceremony last year, I still have the newspaper photograph of it, the tree was planted in my neighborhood, that's how I know.
Hopefully it's still there.
It is, and, no, the, the residents of Winslow Roads, Sims Road, and Madison Avenue West take very good care of it. We make sure it gets watered, we all-
Was it laid down in the middle, the island where the trees-
It's right there in the circle.
I think you laid it in the-
We decorate it at Christmas time, we get, we gather round it for Christmas carols.
It used to be cool, but now it was a Charlie Brown tree, but before it was a-
The poor next tree is going to feel very underwhelmed.
I really can't stress how important that tree was to the neighborhood, it-
It was clear from the discussions that day, yeah.
Yes, early pandemic, it was where all the families gathered to actually, you know, have a life. And like even now, kids come back, old people come back who lived in the neighborhood 50, 60 years ago, and like the tree is what they come and look at first, so. These are important things to our community, and I don't want to sell it short.
Okay. So we had a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, responsibility is overwhelming, but I will sign. Okay, but I think we just have the Consent Agenda.
Yeah, would it be approved, Consent Agenda as printed?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Anything else, Patty? No walk-ons, right?
No, I also have for signature is the citation for our-
Citizen, Citizen of the Year, yes, okay.
Very exciting.
All right, so, motion to adjourn. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and Kim, and good night.